Okay, I'm gonna bounce around a bit. Carrie has to get home up in Missouri. So we're gonna do all the finance things first. I'm gonna go through the financial reports for 12 months ending December 31st. The books are closed. I'm hoping you've had a chance to look at it. If you look at page two on the balance sheet, you'll see the total restricted change from prior year is quite large. That's because of the Walton Family Foundation grants that we've been receiving for the trails. If you go to page three, statement of revenues, you will see the other income inflated from the previous year as well. That's also because of the Walton family. Page four, total other financing sources usage, you'll see there's a net surplus, which is a good guy. Page five is a good news story. This is our reserve balance as a percentage to unrestricted income. We're at 52 percent. You can see that we ended the year at 7.9. When we did the budget back in October, we had forecasted it would be 6.9. And then we had a surge of revenue that we hadn't expected. Taxes were good. So we actually came up a million higher than we thought. You have seen my letter that I sent to Director Kiel that if they're going to select a company out of Ohio that thinks that they can put out the fire for $3 million, then I'm going to come to you and ask for permission to use 1.5 million as our help on getting the fire out. We would be using the 1 million that we had not budgeted for. It's a good guy. Plus, we'd have to find the other 500,000. We can either dip into the reserve or we have a million dollars set aside this year for extra road repairs over and above the 1.2 that we normally do every year, and we can slice that in half and find the money there. I unfortunately have to tell you that I have yet to receive a response to that email that was sent out on January 29th. And we'll talk more about the Trafalgar Road fired later. But I wanted you to see that we have got the money available to us to be able to fund half if they're going to select that company.
And Mayor Christie, where would that take us in with a percentage? I know we have kind of a ceiling. We don't want to go below. We won't be below that.
No, we would still be well above the 25 percent at that point.
Have they ruled out the alternate company that was vying for that activity at a fraction of the cost?
We remain in the dark. We have no idea what they're doing and what they're looking at. We're not part of any of the planning or decision-making. They appear on site. We don't know. We found out today thanks to Kelly. Is he here? Now, Kelly sent me a note saying, "Any idea what the people are doing on the site today?" So I drove up, and there was no one there, but I managed to get the ADEQ project manager. And they had some ADEQ people there on safe and some contractors assessing how they're going to put in the access road, if you remember the original plan. That's the last piece they have to do according to the timetable for OnSafe. They were originally going to use the county, and they have decided not to use the county. They're going to use contractors. I did say we're getting close to the 45, 60-day timeframe. When is this going to be ready? And when are you going to have a company selected? And he said, "We'll probably have to push it out more." We don't know. So we continue to, all of us, including the residents who are very frustrated, as well as ourselves.
The last thing I saw about that company in Ohio, and this was in one of those published reports, they wouldn't talk to OnSafe, who was kind of coordinating. So I wasn't sure how the state ADEQ was going to react to that.
No, they were out here onsite last week, the week before, and they met with ADEQ. And Chief Sims, you were out there as well?
That's correct.
Was OnSafe out there too?
There was nobody on Safe.
Okay.
Yeah, they wanted to talk straight to ADEQ.
Right. So the last thing I heard, I meet regularly now with Kelly and Chris on Thursday afternoons. And last week, Chris, who's fairly close to the company, had said they were going back to tweak their numbers and then submit to the state. I don't know if that's happened yet. I'll find out when I need one. I'll let these two gentlemen on Thursday. Going to page six, I'll just very quickly go through the capital expenditures and where we stand. Of course, the first is the Centurion Water Distribution Center purchase. That's outstanding. The Beckett Drainage Project is outstanding. We've been working on Tillingham. That's coming to a close with box culverts, poured concrete, apron, and wings, backfill, and then put the road back in place. We have eliminated the Reardon Road expansion design. The Hawk Crossing at Dartmoor was completed under budget. The signage at the library, we've decided to stick with the existing signage. The trailhead at Reardon Road has been eliminated because with the closing of the golf course beside Allen's, there is talk amongst the POA that they will turn that into an extension of the Razorback Greenway and put riding trails through there. So we would use the underutilized Sugar Creek parking lot as the trailhead. The sand and salt storage building is done. It came in $8,700 over budget because of the permits that we had to get from ADEQ. And suits us Cedar Crest, of course, was done in 2017. And legislative audit, when they came in for 2018 to do the audit, they made an adjustment. So that's fine. Equipment and capital expenditures, the CDS development and remodel is done. We put a storied front-end loader out at the salt sand building. That's done. The center of water distribution system, of course, is still outstanding. Commercial or CDS got their new truck. The new dump truck finally came in. Funny enough, we got the tailgate first and had to wait for the rest of the truck to arrive about three, four weeks later. The PDs got their car and equipment, and we created another office space inside City Hall. And we still have some space left over in case there's additional growth. We have room for the auditors when they come in this year. And that's it. Carrie's here, in case you have any questions that you'd like to ask about the financial statements.
Can you stick around for the other topic of transfers?
Oh, yes. Don't worry. Okay, since we don't have anything else on the year-end financials, Carrie, nice job. Thanks for pulling it together. I know it wasn't easy. Item number two I'd like to go to is on the second page, and it's item G. And it's a resolution making various adjustments to the 2019 budget. And that is a landscape spreadsheet that Carrie, or I'm sorry, that Wayne has included in your package. Carrie, do you want to just take us through it quickly, please?
Yes. First of all, if you wonder why this wasn't done with our regular budget, this is not Bella Vista sales taxpayer money. This is all restricted money given to us for specific purposes and not operating purposes. And so we don't know how much we have to budget for until the end of the year, when the books have been closed. These, if you'll look at your page two, under the beginning balance, you'll see under general fund, we have a beginning balance in our restricted accounts of 2.4 million. That you should relate to this balance sheet as of December 31st, 2018. The two restricted or the restricted and assigned balances in the balance sheet is what we're dealing with here. Okay? We're not dealing with the unassigned fund balance of 7.9 million that we came into the beginning of this year with, okay? That's what we used to budget for back in October is the unassigned balance. So the way this flows is I'm showing the beginning balance as of the beginning of this year in the first column. If we already budgeted for some items, which is pretty common for the departments to budget for the items that they know they're going to have revenue and expenditures for, that's in the second column. And so the third column is basically to use up the beginning balance, to give us a balance at the end of the year of zero. And so pretty much the third column is going to be a reflection of the first column.
So let me think about that. We start the year with $1,255.80 in this grant account?
Right, in the ambulance trauma grant.
And what's happening in the green column, then?
The green column, I am requesting that you approve the fire department to spend that balance of $1,225.80.
Okay. And for what purpose?
For whatever.
At their discretion?
No, it's whatever that grant is specifically.
It's a specific grant.
Okay.
You can only spend it on certain things. Steve, what is it?
And Steve knows what.
Yeah, it's equipment for the ambulance.
Right.
Okay.
And that's the same with all of them. The Bella Vista Foundation donated money that we had an ending, or beginning or ending balance as of 2018, a remaining $2,400. So we need to spend that. And that was for benches.
And there are two benches in order, which will eat that money.
Well, and they have also given us additional money this year, but this is to spend what was left from last year.
Let's go back to the trauma, because that's a good example. So you have already budgeted $10,597.
Yes.
And that's meaning that's already budgeted in 2019?
Yes, budgeted to receive that amount and to spend that amount.
So somehow we found out we were going to get $1,225 more?
No, we already got it. We already had gotten probably that same amount in previous years, but didn't spend it on.
We have that left. Okay.
And it would be associated with the grant itself on prior years?
Yes.
Okay.
It can be allocated to anything else. It must be spent on that grant.
Right. So is it being transferred from one account to another? Or is this just a way of saying we're authorizing?
This is just to show you this is what it looks like.
It's all, though, if you look at page two of your December financial statements, all of these balances are within these group totals of total assigned and total restricted.
Yes.
But there's a lot of, you know, if I were to expand this in the spreadsheet, I would show you each individual beginning balance that I'm showing on here.
So is this just kind of a review of what's been left at the end of the year, what's left in some of these accounts? And just kind of reviewing that and saying those funds are available perhaps in 2019?
And we can't spend it until you, even though it's a restricted fund.
It has to be appropriated through the budget.
It has to be approved and appropriated by the council for them to be able to spend it.
So would it be fair to say, just so they, to help understand, maybe they thought they were going to get X number of dollars that year, but it came in $1,225 more? So in the previous year's budget, you'd authorized the full amount to be spent, but they ended up actually being a little bit more. So these little leftovers are.
Actually, a couple of these are carryovers from years of audits where the auditors say it wasn't spent, even though like Steve or the former police chief said they thought they had spent it. But we're going to go, these are balances per our audit that we are carrying over into 2019, and we need to get rid of them and go ahead and spend it.
So what we really see here in the first column is the carryover money that if we don't allocate it, we lose it?
No, we don't lose it.
Just don't lose it.
But we might as well spend it.
Let's do a roll around.
It sits there for that particular purpose.
Next year, it'd still be sitting there. Yeah.
So that's true with all of them.
So we're relating the library books that have to sit there until it's read about by library books.
Yes, you're being asked to authorize the green column, and you'll see, you're being asked to spend exactly what our beginning balance is.
It's just to clean up the budget, so we get it out of there.
Yeah. And to spend, you know, we have to, you have to authorize us to spend the Walton Family Foundation trails money and the Sugar Creek Bridge as well, because none of that, even though you approved of that in 2018, none of it was spent. And we didn't authorize the spending of it in October. We only authorized operating expenditures in October.
Because remember, when you approve the budget, you don't authorize the spending. All you're doing is just approving the budget.
Two separate acts, as it should be.
Well, a budget is an appropriation of the funds. It's just those monies were left out of the budget, and we're not accounted for.
But not obligated.
Right.
Because I wanted to know exactly the balances we were going to have at the end of the year. And of course, I don't know that when we're working on the budget in October. And I've learned that that's the way a lot of the other cities do on their restricted funds and their restricted funds and the assignment.
So the way they're in here, they know darn sure exactly what it is.
Right. Because we didn't even get the trails money or the bridge money until, I think, November. So that wouldn't have been budgeted for in the October final budget anyway. We didn't even know about it. And I think we got the trails money from Walton Family Foundation in October possibly, but.
And the comments in the fifth column are helpful to explain.
Yes.
What's really taking place with this money or what it is that we're addressing.
Since we got the Walton Family Foundation money for the trails, we also earned over, we've earned $798 in interest income, which is also includeable. It's also allowed to be spent for the trails. We don't have to return that to them.
But only for that?
Only for that.
And how about this large credit amount? It's got a different story, I guess.
Yes. The Hawk Project was a grant for $50,000. Is that the one you're talking about? We only collected, we only managed to get in around $5,600 of that grant money. We finished the project, but we haven't, it's on a reimbursable basis, not upfront. And so that's why that's negative. That's the amount they owe us. And so I'm budgeting for that amount of revenue from the Department of Transportation in 2019.
This is very different. We haven't done this before. And the reason we're doing it is because we're gearing up, because we're not going to use legislative audit this year. We're going to use a true audit. And so everything has to be squared away properly. Carrie, can you take us through Resolution J, please? This is the reclassification of jail fee revenue.
Yes. Jail fee revenue was budgeted for in the operating budget in October, and it was included on my spreadsheet of the total budget as general fund unrestricted revenue, and it should have been restricted. So I'm asking for a reclassification of that to restricted.
This money goes to pay the county to hold city prisoners. That's basically what it is. So by putting it in the general fund, it might have been available for other uses. It shouldn't be available for other uses. It needs to be restricted to.
That's right. Exactly. You want to restrict it.
And it's just for, it wouldn't have been used for anything but that anyway, but I need my report.
We collect a jail fee of these cases, you saw the other day. There's a certain few dollars of that that is jail fee. And so that goes into this little fund, and it is specifically to be used to pay these jail prisoner housing expenses.
And they've been doing it forever.
Yeah. And so it could not be used for anything else.
Do they send us an invoice or something?
They bill us. Yes, they do. So much per day, and even if you're in there a few hours, it counts as a day. At least it used to, Chief. I think it still does.
There's a limit on selling them, but yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Carrie, I'm going to ask you to stick around just for the next one, which is Resolution Some of the equipment that you've been seeing being purchased, sorry, it's not being purchased. We get it for free through a program called LESO, L-E-S-O, which stands for the Law Enforcement Support Office. It's a military surface program. For example, Humvee that we have for the tactical team, we got that free of charge. There is a generator for the evidence room that's behind the street building that was free of charge. And there are two other vehicles. There's a van, and there's a recent, or not purchased, there's a recent acquisition of a vehicle for a command.
That's what I'm making the command post eventually, so.
Right. All of these we acquire at no cost. And the stipulation is it can only be used by the police, and you must keep it for a year. If after a year you decide you don't want it anymore, you don't give it back, you have permission to sell it. And in this particular situation, the chief is asking that the funds be put into drug interdiction and enforcement activities. So this, too, is a restricted, similar to what Carrie just took us through. Chief, do you want to add anything on this one?
Well, yeah, so, and this wouldn't be something that happens that often, because we don't actually get this equipment with the intent of selling it, okay? But sometimes a lot of this equipment, and there's both restricted and unrestricted equipment, so the restricted equipment, like the Humvee, we couldn't sell. If we ever want to get rid of that, we'd have to give it back, okay? They don't allow you to sell that. But unrestricted equipment, like the van, which is a regular van, and the regular vehicles, okay? You get those sight unseen. So you go up there, not knowing what you're going to get. A lot of times, they don't run, you bring them back, and then, okay, you put a little money into them, and they end up being a good vehicle. But if we ever got something that in the end it just, it didn't work out for us, okay? We don't want to put that much money into it, whatever the case was. We keep it for a year, and then we can sell it. And then I'm asking for that money to put into our drug fund, which is also, we get some money from the courts into the drug fund, and that allows me to go and spend it on any drug interdiction enforcement-related expenditures. An example would be to support our tactical response team. So if there was equipment I realized I needed that we didn't budget for, instead of coming to council and trying to get this money that wasn't appropriate or budgeted for, I can go use my drug fund, and I could purchase this money through the drug, or I could purchase that equipment through the drug fund. So that's all I'm asking in these unique situations where maybe a piece of equipment doesn't work out, and we settle for that money's able to go into the police drug fund to support drug enforcement-related activity in Bella Vista.
What kind of order of magnitude are we talking about, Chief?
Money-wise?
Yeah.
Well, okay, so.
$1,000, $100,000.
It depends on what the equipment is. The generator we have. We got that generator to try to hook up to our exterior, or we have an evidence building out by the streets department. We have an evidence section there that if we lose power, we want to keep it refrigerated. We're having trouble getting that generator to work because it doesn't automate, it's difficult to hook up to an automatic relay switch where it pops on automatically. So if we find a generator that's better, that'll work for that location, that'll come on automatically when the power goes out, and we don't have to go out there and trip it manually, then I'd take that generator that we got previously, and I'd sell that generator. And, you know, I might get $5,000, $6,000 for. So we're talking, you know, you sell a vehicle, get $6,000, $7,000, depending on the vehicle. We're talking about money like that. We're not talking about tens of thousands of dollars. We're talking about either hundreds or thousands of dollars at a time.
One thing it's important to remember is you have an ordinance that talks about the sale of certain of city property, and that we have to comply with, which it would be here. But so there is, you've got a consideration of getting value for whatever it is that's built into your ordinance. I was just curious if I could be order of magnitude.
Is it $1,000, $10,000, $100,000, a debalion?
Yeah, yeah. I would say we'd be dealing in thousands, maybe multiple thousands at the most at a time.
Typically under $50,000 in years.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, any other questions? Carrie, thank you safe home.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Resolution D, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter the contract with Superior Automotive. These are police vehicles. They are all in the 2019 budget. Chief has filled in the business case form that's in your book. Are there any questions for Chief?
Thank you. I didn't see, Chief, whether these are replacement vehicles or net new vehicles.
These are replacement vehicles.
And again, I didn't see the disposition of the old vehicles. What would happen with those? Would they fall under this other?
No, they go off to auction.
They're not bought with that special money.
Oh, yeah, they would go, if we, but these, those vehicles get sold at auction, and that money goes to the general fund.
Okay. They get put to auction, basically.
And they're sticking to the department store, if they were up?
The one we have at City Hall and the one that Doug has are two old police vehicles.
Oh, yeah.
And so we just run them to the ground.
Right.
But the rest, we take off to auction, and we strip them completely. The radios, the lights, the markings, everything comes off.
If there's decent ones that sometimes we can maintain for the rest of the city personnel to use if they need to, then we'll maintain them. Otherwise, we'll sell them at auction.
Thank you.
One question would be, where or how does the Dodge Durango compare price-wise with the Ford Explorer and the Chevy Blazer or Chevy?
So the Dodge Durango is a little less expensive than the Ford Explorer, and actually in 2020, I'm sorry, 2019, they're not making the Ford Explorer. Ford's retooling, well, they're not making the police model.
The police edition.
But the Durango is typically a little less expensive by $2,000 or $3,000 than the Ford Explorer.
Good thing I want to point out to you, especially some of you may not have seen it before, this purchase is pursuant to the state procurement contract. So normally, you're going to spend $20,000 or more, you're going to have to do competitive bidding. So in this particular circumstance, the law says, well, the state has done a bidding on this, and they've come back with these various vehicles. The city can purchase those vehicles according to that state bid without bidding in ourselves. And in fact, we can, if any Arkansas licensed motor vehicle dealer that matches the state bid price, we can use to buy that in the state of Arkansas. So that's why it was not bid. And so talking about cheaper prices, well, the Explorer may have come in higher on the state bid.
And maybe it wasn't bid, because some years it's under one year, and next year it's not on there.
Yeah.
We don't know when we get to stuff. Just haven't seen many of those around in the fleets, that's why.
So the Durango here will not be a police vehicle, if that's your question? I'm sorry. So the Durango will be one of the unmarked vehicles for my detectives. The police vehicles will be the Dodge Chargers, because unfortunately in 2019, they're not making the Ford Explorer, the Interceptor police model. So we had to go back to the Charger for 2019.
And the Dodge Ram 1500?
It's just a pickup truck.
Just a truck.
And that'll go to my CID as well to replace one of the CID vehicles, detective vehicles. A truck is helpful for us when we go out and serve warrants, and we have to process crime scenes, we have to haul things back, evidence back.
The yield is reported on the street department. We didn't have it on here.
Okay, any other questions for Chief?
Thank you.
Okay, if you go over then, over the page, and we'll go to number L. Chief, this is yours again. Policy change and a new command structure?
Okay. Would you like me to, Mayor, would you like me to explain it?
Please.
Okay, so I'm asking for a couple of policy changes. Since a policy is approved by the city council, I need to bring them forward. One of them has to do with intergovernmental agreements. Right now, we have the ability to have intergovernmental agreements with other agencies around us like Bentonville and things like that, if we need assistance, and they need assistance from us. I want to go into intergovernmental agreement with HSI, which is Homeland Security Investigations. This is to assist us with drug enforcement activity in Bella Vista. Since we're so small, I have one drug officer, it's difficult to be able to do things by ourselves a lot of times. Homeland Security Investigations has offered to partner with us. They partner with Bentonville and some other bigger agencies around here as well. But to do that, our policy only allows us to partner with, it's the way it's written, with local municipal and county agencies. So I just included some verbiage in your package to indicate we can also partner with state and federal agencies as well, under all the same guidelines and policies that we currently do with local agencies. No difference there. And the other policy change is just, you'll see an org chart. We just added that position that was budgeted by the council last year for a administrative position within CID. And then I just.
Now we'll bounce over to Resolution E and we'll go through the fire department. First is enter into a contract with Braun Industries and amount not to exceed 147764 for a remount. If you remember, we did a remount of an ambulance this past year. This is where we retain the box and perhaps update the box, but it gets a new chassis and new motor and cab. It's much, much cheaper than actually going out and purchasing. In your package, there is an overview by Chief Sims. There's also a copy of the advertising for the bid. You might think it's a crossword puzzle, but it's not. It's actually highlighted, but the highlight didn't come through because it's in black and white. It's underneath the crossword puzzle.
Give me a little entertainment, Chief.
I was trying to give you something.
Very little.
And then the bid response and the purchasing agreement is also included in that section. It's quite large. I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to go through it because you can see that there are new additions that are being added for us to see. You know, the suspension, for example, would be liquid spring, backup alarm, siren speakers, all that. And then if you see transfer, it's being moved over from the existing one. So everything is broken out so that you have an opportunity to view it and see what the amenities, for lack of a better term, will actually be, or the options that'll be on the, on the remounted vehicle. Chief, anything to add? On the remount, anything to add?
Well, I want to add, I did add a little bit of contingency in there to cover the air conditioning unit.
Okay.
Those air conditioning units, if you actually get in there and look at them, and there could be some additional repairs, I had a little bit of contingency in there to kind of cover that expense.
Is that Frank's love of Fords?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't get Frank's heart on that. Different chassis though.
Chief Sims, I know that the bid for proposal process is intended to create kind of an atmosphere of competition among contractors and I believe we only had one bid come back on this. Is, what, where does, does that change anything for you or we'd like to see multiple bids, ideally, I think?
Actually, we do and, but on this particular product or ambulance we have, the box we have, in order to keep our warranty, it has to be done by Braun Industry Remounter. It has to be certified by Braun Industries and there's not very many out there that actually are certified by Braun. So that's why there's, there's only a few people.
That actually would justify waiting to bid honestly, if we had to bid. Then we hadn't did it out.
That's right. The boxes have a lifetime warranty on them and we can, we can remount those boxes as long as they hold up. So we can add, we can add new to them or do whatever we need to do with them for the lifetime of the box, so.
Or reoutfit them, or reoutfit the boxes.
We, we actually, when we get the, when we get the ambulance back, we take the equipment off the other, the ambulants and we just move it over to the remounted ambulance.
That's why when you go through, you'll see the word transfer, means it's been transferred?
Yeah. Well, just transfer everything, all the equipment back over to that ambulance and use that ambulance.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move to Resolution H, please. That's the fire department again, Chief. This is to enter into a contract with Superior Automotive. Again, it's on a state procurement contract for the purchase of a 2019 Tahoe four by four. And again, if you look at the, at the business case, this will be used as an on-duty command And I would draw your note that the oldest fleet vehicle we have is a 2008 Chevy Tahoe. Last year, we only spent four hundred dollars on maintenance of it. The Tahos have a good track record of low maintenance.
So replacement or a net new?
It's, it'll actually be an addition. That one and the pickup truck will both be additions to the department. We're gonna use, as you can see in the, in the summary there, we're gonna take the oldest Tahoe we have, move it to the Highlands, the newest fire station, and we're gonna use that for special, you know, type events so we're not getting ambulance and a fire truck out making certain calls on it.
So is that fully outfitted color and decal and lighting for this price?
That right there, that price right there is just for the vehicle itself without any type of lighting except, that's additional in the budget, actually in the budget, so.
In the budget, again, if you read the business case, it'll say, in the budget, also includes seven thousand dollars to outfit the vehicle for the necessary equipment.
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else? All right, let's go to Resolution I, Chief, that's yours again. And this is again through the state contract, a 2019 Chevy Silverado truck. And if I remember correctly, Chief, this is for the new training officer?
That's correct.
This is actually was bid.
It was bid out.
This is not, this is...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, this was bid.
That's correct, because you did.
So if you remember, last year, we hired a training officer as part of the requirements that ISO said if you want to get to a three from a four on your rating, you need to have a training officer in place. And he was hired last year, he's doing a great job for us and this vehicle is for him.
It's a three-quarter Tahoe to move an equipment set from, from training sites.
So in your package is the invitation to bid, the bid from Superior, and the itemized options that will be on the vehicle. You can have a look at it.
Out of curiosity, since we're talking about the four to three, has anyone done any projections of what the potential savings might be to the residents in the city for moving to a four to a three, given that some insurance companies don't recognize that in their rates?
I don't think we have at this time.
What ISO has always told us is if you jump, the closer that you jump to one, the greater the savings for the residents. So for example, when we moved from a six to a four, a lot of residents saw a very large saving. I know that we saved a hundred and twenty-four dollars a year. There was a lady up on, is it Lake Windsor, that saved six hundred?
That's correct.
And ISO is saying, you thought that was good, waited to go from a four to a three. That'd be even better.
Generally, the three, when you get to a three and move on up, you start saving at each level on that with ISO.
I don't think we'll ever get anything other than a three because of the topography and it's forty-seven square miles. But to get from a six to a three is a good move.
I guess I would, I would like to see some assessments of what the merits are financially to us versus the cost impacts to us to move from the four to the three.
Yeah, that's just adding that position up there, just a small piece of that.
I realize that, Chief Sims, and that's why I posed the question, it would be good to see what's our, what's our benefit to our residents versus what's our cost to implement going from a four to a three?
Well, if you have a hundred, if you have fourteen thousand roof costs and you're saving a hundred and fifty bucks per rooftop, it certainly is a good deal.
And I guess the question is, not all of the members will get that benefit because not all the...
State Farm doesn't use...
Homeowners doesn't recognize it.
I guess that's correct.
Yeah.
Not everybody uses it, so it changes for me.
Certainly, we don't use State Farm and we saw a nice improvement. Okay, so that was number nine, I think, on my own personal list? Yes. Okay, now we'll start to go through. Doug, we've got a zoning ordinance that's come up and it's a certain parcel that's moving from residential to C1. And if I remember correctly, that's up on 279 Forest Hills Boulevard and it's a commercial enterprise that's in a church building and they want to put a sign out front and they can't put the sign out until it's actually classified as a C1. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And this has gone through the planning commission?
Yes, sir. They approved it.
Okay, do you and Derek have any thoughts that you'd like to share with council? No?
Derek presented it to the planning commission.
Okay, Derek, anything?
Staff recommended approval of this project. It is compatible with the future land use map of the city and it is, like the mayor said, in close context with the commercial core of that Forest Hills Boulevard in Lancashire. And the description is outlined regarding the purpose of the switch from residential to commercial is, is in line with what the applicant provided staff.
Wasn't that unanimous, planning commission recommendation on that?
Yes, sir.
May I?
I just had a quick question. I thought it was an off-site realtor that wanted to put a sign there and I wanted to clarify that an off-site, if once it's zone commercial, any other commercial entity can put a sign on a commercial property?
I believe that's correct.
Well, they would have the same, if once it's zone commercial, any business there that is within that zone has the right to do anything that zone permits.
That's not my question.
Okay.
She's questioning whether an off-site business can put a sign there.
Correct.
In other words, their, their businesses down the road, across the street, can they put a sign there once it's zone commercial?
I'd have to go back and pull the code on our off-site signs.
I didn't get a chance to pull it through.
Can you clarify, was this, the rezoning of that was the intent for someone to use the building as an office building and then put a shingle out in front?
That is correct. This specific, the specific request here was someone that actually already operates this real estate interest at this location, in the existing house there, and to help advertise her business, she wanted to be able to put a sign up related to that, to that.
Does she own the property?
The church actually owns it. It's, the property under discussion is largely covered by a parking lot and then also a house adjacent to the church.
Ooh, and we don't have these happening very much here in Bellevista, like a lot of places. And I, I don't know who all's got one, so I'll go ahead and send that to everyone again. A memo that kind of talks about the things you can consider when it comes to rezoning and the things you can't consider when it comes to rezoning. For example, big example would be, we think this is a great commercial spot, grocery would fit there, but we don't want that particular kind of grocery store. You can't, you know, that kind of thing. You can't do that. So I will find that and email that out to you. It's a few years old, but it's still good. You'll have that for you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's start from A then. A is the ordinance concerning hole traps, foothold traps. If you remember, I received a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Holdman back in December asking that the council take this under consideration at the January meeting. We did so. Jason wanted to double-check with Game and Fish to see if they had something already. And, sir?
Well, didn't check with Game and Fish, but reviewed the law on this. And so, one thing you need to know is that when it comes to the city's authority in this area, the city does not have the authority to regulate trapping of animals as such, or hunting or fishing. That's exclusively in the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission by state constitution. But what the city can do is protect the public. And so what you can do is if you believe there's anything out there that could potentially pose harm to the public or to the public's property, you have every right to regulate it, be it something you would use for hunting or trapping or whatever. So, so you'll look and see in your proposal there, it says, in order to protect the safety of the public, the usage of foothold traps is prohibited. If the council wanted to say, no, we just think it's an animal issue, I would say you can't do it for that purpose. You have to be looking out for the public on this, otherwise we're treading on the Game and Fish's constitutional authority to regulate hunting and fishing. Plus, it's important to note that there is now in the state constitution, a constitutional right to hunt and trap and fish that was enacted here in the last few years. And so you're talking about potentially impact on a person's constitutional rights related to this. So it's very important we talk about in terms of public safety, which it is.
So that's why you worded it?
That's just why I worded it the way I did.
Because the Holdmans actually were quite correct. There are children going down into the halls, exploring and doing, and doing what kids do and...
So they'll put a bike trailer in that holler and then they'll catch all the bikes.
Have you heard any pushback on this with people?
I haven't heard anything.
One question would be, is relative to violations and the impact of penalties, do we need to specify anything in?
We have a general code penalty section for anything that's in our code and I could, I'll give you those numbers, I don't want to misquote them to you, but first offense is within a range and then after that, each day is a, is a separate range. So unless, you certainly may adopt a special minimum maximum fine for this if the council wants to do that, but if it doesn't say, it kind of falls into our general for everything.
Would it be helpful to refer to that general schedule as to where this really fits? You say there's one out there.
Well, it's in, it's in the code, so we've codified all of our ordinances. And so there's a penalty section and it says that for any, any section of this code which does not provide a separate penalty, the penalties for a violation are, and it's right there. And then, so we've got these all throughout the code and if it doesn't have its own penalty, we just go back to the front of the book. So, no, you would not typically, on how ordinances are codified, cross-reference everything. I mean, you can, but it's not typically done. It's not illegal to do it.
This will become codified at some point.
Exactly. This is an amendment to our city code, it'll be, fit in to everything else and fold it in.
It's your view that we don't really need to do any...
Unless you want to have a different penalty range for this as compared to your general penalty range. And I can tell you what those numbers are. I'll, I can email it to you tomorrow if you want.
Okay, any other questions? I will also ask to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading on this. I think it's important enough, especially for the children, and we need to move quickly on it. Okay, let's go over to Resolution F on the second page. This is approving the appointment of Chris Estle to the BZA to fill an expirative term. Chris is here tonight and he has a very good... Chris, you want to hold your hand up one more time?
Thank you.
Stand up for people in the back there.
His resume is included in your packet. He's currently working at Hyde Jackson. It's interesting that you actually started in the construction industry as a carpenter. So you started from the ground floor up and decided to become an architect?
Yeah.
Good for you. That's excellent.
Okay.
Any questions for Chris at all? I look forward to having you on. Thank you very much for stepping forward.
Happy to be on that.
Okay, the next, and the last resolution is approving the mayor's reappointment of Daniel Ellis and Gail Klessen to the planning commission for another four years. I know that Steve is on the planning commission, Daniel's been around a long time and he works for Kraft and Toll, he's a professional engineer. And Gail likewise has been on for a long time, she knows the code backwards and they do a great job for us. Okay, so that's the business portion. Now we'll go through the discussion items.
Both, both of these individuals have indicated willingness to serve.
Oh, of course, yeah. No, I wouldn't do it unless they...
Unless they're not asking.
Okay, the Trafalgar Road fire update. The culvert has been finished, Mike and his crew went in last week and they trenched eight hundred feet, they put the new culvert in and they have blocked up the old culvert as requested by ADQ to stop the water from running. If you remember, the old culvert, I guess it goes back to Cooper days when they put the road in, it was draining right into the middle of the fire section. They didn't want water going down there, nor did they want oxygen going down the length of the pipe. So they finally gave us the engineering specs. We also had to get permission from the property owner. Remember the house that sits behind? That's not part of Blue Mountain. That's owned by somebody separate who didn't know that he still owned it because it went in.
It was in foreclosure.
Yes, it was in foreclosure, the bank didn't file the papers. So we had to track down the actual owner, much to his surprise, and he agreed to give us access to the land so that we could put the culvert in. So that's been done, it's been reported back. And if you go back to the original unsafe, pre-extinguishing list, that was the last thing that they had asked the city to do. But of course, if there's more that they would like us to do, then we will entertain it and do as much as we possibly can. And as I mentioned to you, it looks like they're gonna bring in contractors to actually do the access road as opposed to asking the county to do so.
You had mentioned offering a million and a half for the extinguishment of the fire there.
For one particular... As I mentioned to you, it looks like they're going to bring in contractors to actually do the access road as opposed to asking the county to do so.
You had mentioned offering a million and a half for the extinguishment of the fire there.
For one particular company that said that they could do it for considerably less money than what OnSafe is quoting.
And so the question would be is, are we obligated for that money?
No, 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 no. All I've said in the letter is that I would be willing to call, I sent, I sent a copy to everyone.
Yes.
That I would be willing to call a special meeting of city council and ask for their permission to obligate one and a half million towards the extinguishing of the fire using that particular company. I believe they're called High Heat Specialists, and they're from Ohio.
But what was interesting was the proposal from the alternate firm for a fraction of that cost.
Thirty-three thousand.
Under fifty.
Pyro coal.
Yeah.
And as far as I know, ADQ has not accepted.
Both, both of them claim to have had success in putting on fires of this type, so.
But they did have this fellow on site. ADQ did ask this fellow from Ohio to attend on site, and he did so. I don't believe they've asked the other company, I don't know.
You mentioned, you made that offer to KEO.
Yes, to Director KEO.
That's Director of ADQ?
Yes.
And, and no reply?
I've never had a reply.
Is there anything we could do to, to drive that? Phone call?
Well, I think it's probably the very fact that they invited that particular company come on site is sort of a roundabout way of saying, okay, I acknowledge, and therefore we'll move forward. I did ask for funding for evacuation relief. I haven't heard anything. I asked for intervention with the financial community to help people with their mortgages. I have not had a response to that either. In the meantime, we did send it out to Positively Bella Vista, which is an organization that does some really good work for people around the city, and they have arranged for 12 homes to be, actually 12 people have arranged to allow people to come in and share their homes with them if they so desire, you know, to give them some relief so they don't have to pay hotel costs. And we also approached the churches. The First United Methodist Church down on Voice has opened up. This will be their fourth week. A daytime shelter, running from, I believe, 8:30 to 4:30 Monday to Thursday, and 8:30 to 12:30 on Friday. Unfortunately, as far as I know, no one has taken up either, either offer, and I can understand the home one, you know, it might feel a little uncomfortable going into someone else's home, but I thought it was a very generous offer by our own residents to do so.
I did also, Mayor Christie, I wanted to correct one thing in that I, I believe that the 12 homes were organized by a single citizen.
That's correct.
Dietrich Newman, not necessarily part of the Positively Bella Vista.
Right, but in response to, I believe Tim and, and Chris reaching out, and this person then responded, which is terrific. It's really good news. Lowe's has been helping residents for quite some time with discounted filters, et cetera. I spoke with the manager there about four weeks ago. He was trying to get a plan run through Home Office, and then on Valentine's Day, he sent me a very nice Valentine, saying that he was going to set up the program locally, and he gave the discount rates. I believe I sent that out to you as well, and Cassie's put it on the website, and he is committed to ensure that he has stock on hand all times until this unfortunate situation is resolved. So there are some good things happening, but we need the fire to go out. That's first and foremost, number one. Okay, the Mercy Road update. Counselor, I believe you've looked at some of it, and?
We have, I believe, actually, Harry, thanks so quickly, had some, or I believe you, Mayor, in fact, had some communication with regard to the grant itself, and I, and if the city were to decide not to proceed, then really we wouldn't incur anything as regards to that grant. The city has entered into an agreement with Burns McDonald for certain work related to it. It was a cost-plus arrangement. The total cost of it was in the neighborhood of about $300,000, maybe in the high $200,000 if, if it had been taken to completion. That contract does have some early termination provisions in it, which I think would greatly, greatly reduce any cost that the city would have if we decide not to move forward. In fact, there's language in here that means we, to the extent they haven't done it yet, we're not on the hook for it. So I would say would not necessarily be a very expensive thing. We would owe them a little something, but I don't think it would be a tremendously expensive thing if the city decided it did not want to move ahead with the project after a review. Now, if, if, the mayor cannot just tell you where we are, the mayor could not unilaterally decide to do that. The council has, past councils have adopted resolutions supporting and approving these contracts in this project, so those would need to be revisited if you were going to look at doing that. But there's been some new information that the mayor was talking to me about, about possibly some additional funding to go toward it, so you may not even want to go down this road, and that may be where you need to pick back up.
Okay. The bridges were estimated to cost around $5 million, a little more. It's an 80/20 contract, so our exposure is roughly a million dollars, and I think that's the concern that was mentioned on the last work session.
Whether the benefits really outweigh the cost and how we could otherwise apply that million dollars or most of it in other street programs.
Now, remember that, you know, as well as widening it to four lanes, whatever the previous council thought that was the right thing to do, there's also a bike in a pedestrian lane, because the thought is to link it up with the Razorback Greenway so that we will have people coming over the bridge and going into the Little Sugar Creek area to hopefully spend their dollars here and enjoy the beauty of Bella Vista. Plus, if the POA decides that they're going to do something with the former golf range next door and put in more trails there, that would be attractive. I am, if you, if I feel that there's a consensus this evening, I'm willing to go and see if we can find a partner that might split the cost for us, so that our cost to put in a $5 million bridge is $500,000 as opposed to a million. But I'm not going to move forward with that unless I get a feeling from all of you, yes, it's worth at least picking up the phone and making a, a call or two and see if there's somebody or some agency that would wish to help us with this. Is that something that you'd like me to do?
The 80% comes from where?
That's the, yes, it's a grant.
From the state, federal?
Feds.
Federal. Fed money via the state.
Because it runs through, it's a little complicated. It goes fed, state, and it goes through regional planning, and then is applied against the project.
So we're, we're linked in and locked into that 80%?
That, well, we only pay the 20. They pay the 80.
Well, I understand. We're locked into their, that's 80%.
It's an 80/20.
Yes, that's, that's as much.
And the mayor may be able to find somebody to cut that in half. So, so the question is, are all of the costs that we will be obligated to eligible under that 80% program, or are there any other costs?
It's all included in the grant.
No, it's all included.
Everything is included.
There, there've already been, I mean, parts of it have already been done.
Yeah.
There was reimbursement, I, I don't know the amounts.
They wouldn't be able to be able to go for the grant unless they were to show what all the costs would be.
So if the cost goes up to five and a half million, is it still at 80% or are we capped at our?
No, it's 80/20. It never changes.
Regardless of the dollar amount?
Because it's already been up close.
Right.
Because of the price of steel.
Mayor Christie, Spiker Bridge had a need to be replaced. Does Mercy Bridge, where does it stand in terms of its age and its vulnerability?
It's not an old bridge. It was put in place in 1997.
Do you have something like that? Maybe a little bit before that.
Okay, so no, it's not an old bridge. It's 20 years old. The maintenance costs will go up as the years, as the years carry on, but a bridge should last 30, 40 years, right?
I would say before major maintenance.
Yeah.
Before the school, it didn't get any use at all.
We've seen, you know, an increase, the population on the east side, there are still more building permits being pulled on that side than there are on central or west. As Jim pointed out at the last meeting, it backs up really only around, around the school time. The rest of the time, it's pretty much open. The only attractive portion to it is, is the Razorback Greenway, because it's been constructed and it's sitting down. If you look over the, you know, over the edge as you're going in towards Mercy, you can see that it's stopped and it's weighted.
Was there any kind of traffic flow study that would indicate that there might be some improvements in the flow of traffic?
I haven't seen any, I haven't seen any whatsoever from the past council. Jim, did you see?
No, and we don't know for sure. They put that light at Kingsland, you could cut that lab inside down quite a bit.
Yes.
Put that light, there's no way to tell till it's in, because everybody comes out when else you get across the highway anymore?
Otherwise, it's too difficult to cross at Kingsland.
Well, that's almost suicide. It's not a good, it's not a good choice. If you can get, I mean, I'll, you know, I, I don't want it at all, but if you can get it, somebody to give us half of our million, I'd give it a shot. Worst they could do is say no.
Okay.
They'll get it a little cheaper.
All right, yeah, I'll do that.
And seeing everybody loads the trails except for me, but.
And the current?
Sorry.
Go ahead. And the current proposal is to replace the bridge completely or to augment it with additional?
No, be augmented. What they're going to do is actually add two additional lanes on the south side. They would retain the existing two lanes and take one of those and make it into a bike, into a walking path.
And we have a three-lane?
No, it'll be a four, but they're going to, there's enough space that they, you know, that they can do.
The wide thing would be more than two lanes actually.
Correct.
In order to accommodate.
Correct.
A couple of things I want to bring to your attention. You know, we, this doesn't happen, just to be quite honest with you, where these grants, cities get to this point in these grant programs and then back out. And so, one thing you do need to consider, just like this agreement with this McDonald group, Burns McDonald, it looks like it's not going to cost us very much to, to get out of this, but it could cost us more in the future to enter into agreements if they have a reason to believe that we're not going to end up following through on projects. So just thinking, you know, word of mouth type of effects.
I understand, yeah, okay.
Anything else? Sorry to keep rushing you, but I'm cognizant of the weather. Okay, at the last meeting, Larry had mentioned that he wanted some particular information. He sent out a, a listing of everything that he would like. It's in your packet. Doug asked me to speak on his behalf. He feels that he does not need this kind of detailed information, that that's why we have a Planning Commission with PEs sitting on that, and that if he really wanted to obtain this kind of detailed information, he could go over to Doug's department and easily have a look at it. So he asked that I pass that along to you. I'm not sure if Linda or Steve, you've had a chance to look at this?
I have, and my first take, I thought there, I thought there were at least a few things in here that I would, I would appreciate visibility into as well, so I, I don't want to throw the whole thing out, not for me at this point.
Some of those documents we ought to be generating now as part of the project development phase, and part of them is to have the consultant a little accountable in terms of his reporting to us, which is more readily, more readily available to our viewing in terms of the comparisons or the alternatives.
Yeah, but is it in plain English that all of us are going to understand, do you think?
I would hope so. It ought to be.
And I know that you're a, a professional engineer, so you're miles ahead of the rest of us to understand.
Well, I guess, speaking from my background, that was customary experience that we expected to provide a client to clearly explain, easy to understand, tables, charts, whatever.
Okay, were any of those client cities, and did they take it right down to council level?
They were all cities and towns, utilities.
And all that information went in front of council?
It was available to them.
Okay, well, that's what Doug's saying. He doesn't necessarily want to see it. He just wants to know that he can, can see it if need be.
Oh, and, and that's what I'm saying, to make, to make those comparisons and evaluations, I'd like to have a better understanding of what that really.
Okay, well, the man to talk to is sitting right behind you. Steve, if you want to get together with Larry and sort of?
I would.
Pick and choose?
Right, because to your point, I think, to the, to the extent that we understand the process and the rigors that have gone into the process, it makes it a whole lot easier for me to trust the process. And right now, I'm kind of starting new, and I don't really understand everything that's happened leading up to that, and so some of these same points that Larry's making, I had questions about that even as I reviewed the agenda for tonight, so.
And I don't want to make busy work for these people, and then, you know, if you can walk over there and talk to them, that should be good enough, because I'm big on not doing busy work, just to have something to do.
Right.
And if it's available already, just go ask for it.
Yes, there would be no busy work.
It shouldn't be any busy, busy work. It should be documentation that's already provided for.
But somebody's got to input and get it to us and all that other stuff, so I call that busy work.
Somebody has to do that anyway.
No, it's already there.
Well, I'm saying if, if the engineer is taking an itemized bid, he's going to have to validate the bid numbers by number extensions, and so he's going to have to create that spreadsheet anyway.
Right, but it's right there. Let's go see him.
I understand.
You know, because you've got to remember, you're not in Wisconsin now either, so things are different.
Well, I understand that.
It'll be 20 years to get out of that. I'm, I'm calling what you want to do, busy work, because that's what it is. It's already available.
Well, it's something that needs to, that needs to be done regardless. All we're saying is if the consultant doesn't provide it, I'd like to see it in our hands.
Well, it's already there though. You just told it's already there.
Okay, Linda, so?
I could not find this alleged attached document, so I'm in left field here, because I couldn't find it in the packet.
There are two attached documents. Page 66.
Yeah, it's in there.
66?
Yep.
Here, Linda.
Because you're not ordered, is why.
It's tucked in there.
I never found it.
Yeah.
Because that's all the Mercy Bridge stuff, and according to this, it was after the Mercy Bridge stuff.
Okay, so Linda, if you can have a look at it, if you have any thoughts, can you share them with Larry? Steve, same thing?
Why, hang on, FOI? We're not, we're not going to be able to have them communicated one another. I mean, if you all want to have a little meeting at City Hall, we'll notify the media so they can do that, have that conversation, so.
But I could never find anything in there.
Okay, so if you want to have the meeting at City Hall, make sure you run it through the wing.
Two hours' notice.
And you can, and you can send it out to the press.
Page 66, where I have something.
Doug, you have any comments on it?
No, I'm in. I can get any of this information.
You can. Okay, good. That's good. One way or another, that's good news.
Let me ask the dumb question. Do you usually get this from the engineer anyway in your packet?
I, I usually see it.
You don't get it, though?
I don't. Sometimes I do.
You don't get copies of it?
Keep in mind, he's been in there, so he has a tremendous number of projects to have experience on, on now.
I bet you you can ask him, and he'll give it to you. He can email it to you. They don't have it. So what a concept.
I don't think I really need to have all this.
Somebody generates.
Okay, shall we move on? Yes. The next is the POA initiative to extend the Razorback Greenway, 10-foot wide paved walking and biking path from where the Razorback currently ends at the first parking lot, taking it through their property up on, I believe, common ground on Houston, up to Commonwealth, turn left, and go into the parking lot where the, these are the maps, et cetera. If you could picture where the children's bicycle pump track is located, and there are covered picnic areas, I think there's a, there's a golf, a miniature golf in there too.
Dropping midfield?
Yes, yeah. So that would be, excuse me, the place it starts and the place it ends. Thought being that if there are some children who actually want to ride their bicycle down to Cooper Elementary, they would have the ability to do it off the road, on a separate paved surface. The POA is working with Trail Blazers, and I think I've included, yes, the preliminary designs are being paid for by the Walton Family Foundation.
So that's what all the white stakes and red flags are on Houston for?
That's correct.
Okay. Would they open up like the backside of Blowing Springs so you can go through there? Is that?
Yes. It's, it's really hand in hand with the next item. Again, it's POA initiative. An arboretum in Blowing Springs, if you can picture where the last parking lot ends and the trail down the middle, they're going to put signs up saying arboretum, and they're going to be planting trees, as well as flower beds, other types of plants. And again, it's being funded by the Walton Family Foundation. So the path for the kids would not necessarily come right through the gate. There was some discussion at the last meeting, it would come around the edge and go like this and come in from the side. That's yet to be determined. It's very much in its infancy, but I wanted all of you to be aware of it, as you may hear about it in the press or from the POA meetings, and you may be asked some questions about it. If you really want to go into the nitty gritty, it'd probably be best to talk to Trailblazers or Mike Ab, I think Mike still sits on their board until the election, or talk to Tom.
So where this begins then is to the east of where the benchell or shelter is there?
Yes, that's correct.
And then runs up to, what is it, Houston that goes by there or is that?
It's not a bench hill.
Are you talking the arboretum?
Yeah.
No, the arboretum will not run that full length. I don't know how far it's going to go down, but it will start at the, I believe it's an asphalt trail that goes right through the middle of it. Benchell is here, right? And you're heading towards the back 40, and there's that strip of asphalt. That's where it'll start. I'm not sure how far they're going to go back, but not all the way to.
It's Houston coming up.
Dorking.
Well, it's, it's not Houston, it's Manchester.
Manchester.
Houston comes, Houston comes in down road, it's Manchester coming to the school.
So there's no city business for this in the near term?
No.
Thanks for the FYI.
Okay, Linda, dusk to dawn lighting.
Okay. Almost three years ago, I brought this up because I.
It died.
I know Oz is very opposed to it because it's.
I believe she is too, I bet. Go ahead.
Okay, Linda, carry on, please.
That people can build or buy a house and their neighbor can put up one of these god awful dusk to dawn lights that totally ruins their ability to sit down on their desk and enjoy dust, desk, deck, excuse me, and enjoy the night sky. And I think it's horrendous that we allow this to happen in Bella Vista without a permit, that people's enjoyment of their home can be ruined. More recently, and I would like to bring it up again, to require a city permit to do it with permission of the people who are going to be adversely affected by such a light. I was out recently with some folks who are looking to build in Bella Vista, and they would like to build adjacent to the trail. They have been unable to find a lot because one of the things they want to do is to be able to sit out on their deck and enjoy the peace and quiet and darkness in Bella Vista. So they found a lot that they want to buy, which happens to be on Berkshire, and I have a plaque here.
Is it one of yours?
No.
Well, it sounds like it's a real estate thing. But go ahead.
I'm trying to satisfy people who want to enjoy the rural environment in Bella Vista and are not being able to. Here's a situation where the house is here, there's a telephone pole across the street that has a dusk to dawn light that is paid for by the people that live in this house. They were looking to buy the lot on which this telephone pole fits, and Carroll Electric told them that even if they owned the lot, that that pole is on, they could not have that light turned off. That is crazy to me.
It's not a city paid light, it's a private.
Most of the lights that you see in Bella Vista are not city lights. They are privately owned dusk to dawn lights, where the people pay Carroll Electric like six or seven bucks a month, and they flip on when it gets dark and stay on all night.
And you call them and they'll come and replace the bulb when it goes out.
Right. So here's a situation where they found a lot they want to buy, but even though the telephone pole is on that lot, they can't have it turned off because the guy across the street pays for it. I think it's an atrocious situation, and it's adversely affecting people's lives.
Short answer might be is to require any future streetlights installed to be full cutoff design. Which that would have that.
But if they don't have to get a permit to do it, there's no mechanism.
Oh, yes, there is. Send a notice to the electric companies that service Bella Vista and to tell them any future streetlights you install or replace shall be of this design. That's our ordinance.
I'd, I'd love to have something put together that will solve the problem.
I'm surprised, isn't our code now require in your building zoning somewhere is required full cutoff fixtures anyway?
What do you mean by cutoff?
It's, it's a design of the light so that it can only stray a certain distance from the light head.
Oh, everything's shielded.
Right, there's, all the outdoor shield, all outdoor lighting has to be shielded by state law.
Well, then this applies too.
But I think the problem is the existence of the light, of any type of light.
It may be existing and you can't.
You know, the old ones, yeah.
But any, but what you could do is, if the law, if our rules don't require it now, is to require that on any upgrade or replacement of fixtures, they shall need our code and send that notification off.
I think Carroll Electric would tell you that any new ones they put up comply with the outdoor shield.
That may well be.
They're all over the state. Well, all electric companies all over the state.
So, but if, if we don't have that provision clearly, and that may be when you rectify that language.
Well, I mean, and the other thing is, how can we tell somebody that they've got to deal with somebody else's light on their property?
It's an, it's an existing.
But how can Carroll Electric regulate that instead of the city regulating it, is my concern?
Well, the fact is, is that it's like an existing house that doesn't perform. We can't make it go away. It has to stay there until it expires for some reason.
So we now have three or four lots in here adjacent to the trail, which won't be sold because of that light?
Well, it, it's a positive negative thing, I think, Linda. Positive side is that it illuminates other areas and so provides some security for them. And the negative side is, yes, it does shine on my windows or when I'm sitting on my deck, but there's a pro and con side to that. And I think that part of it needs to be balanced. The new light will not illuminate such a gross area, but will also not be as objectionable for.
What's the address of this lot?
Outlets don't have addresses.
What?
Well, where is it then?
On Berkshire Lane.
Okay, so how far in, you know, you can.
It's almost to the cul-de-sac. There's the cul-de-sac. The house at the end of the cul-de-sac is number 67. I don't know what that other house number is.
So it's B-E-R-K-S-H-I-R-E?
B-E-R-K.
Off of Trafalgar.
S-H-I-R-E.
I mean, that's just one example. And I, there have been other people that have emailed me that say, how do I get rid of this light on my street because I can't see the stars and I can't sit on my deck?
But wouldn't their deck normally be on the backside of the house, on the other side of the light?
When you've got curving streets like this?
Well.
I had the same situation the first house I bought when I came here, and I would not have bought it again once I saw what the light did.
And house designs can be flipped, mirrored, create the, I mean, there's, it is an isolated situation, and, and I would agree with you that it can be annoying, but you know it ahead of time. It's not like you live there and now all of a sudden that ugly light comes.
But you could. That could be, that is happening.
Well, no, because if I understand Counselor right, that.
Public funds cannot be used on anything other than shielded lights. Now, what I cannot tell you is that if a private person installs something on their own water, on their own electric meter, that might look like a streetlight, some of these things you, I've seen them in Lowe's.
Then this code kicks in.
Then, then we need to look at that and see, I don't know that we permit those or not. I, I don't, I don't know.
And if our language isn't clear enough to apply to privately installed lights, even though they're under contract with Carroll Electric, we need to put that under the umbrella, which would preclude your issue from expanding.
Possible.
No, not possible.
One thing just.
It would.
Legally, you said, one thing you said is you wanted the, the neighbors to basically get, get the permission of the neighbors. You really can't have a city permitting scheme where you do that, because you give people a veto to a city license, which we really cannot permit.
But we already asked for neighbors' feedback when we do a variety of things.
You can get feedback, but it's not the, it's not the yay or nay as to whether the permit is granted.
It's not the permission.
It could be the neighbors are objecting to it, but, but there, there would have to be some city reason, not just the opinion of the neighbors, that would preclude the issuance of the permit, which would have to be some sort of nonconformance with our requirements. Okay.
I, I just think there needs, our strategic plan clearly states that we are a rural area. We're not downtown Rogers. And I think protecting people's ability to see the stars and relax, not in a lit up city, is important. And I'd like to, maybe Doug and I can talk about a way to resolve, to get that resolved.
Okay.
If, if we need to do a language to bring it under the umbrella of our ordinance, privately owned streetlights, I think that's something that's manageable under the code, it would seem to me, because it's not public, it's not ours. And whoever provides that, then would need to comply with our rules, because it is a privately owned, even though it's not, it's a lease arrangement, is privately owned. So I still think that that might even fall under the umbrella with maybe a per view of our.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Linda, the next one's yours as well, SP 170.
Right. I don't know if the, the city is in a position when the state proposes legislation to take a stand on such legislation.
You can. The council can express an opinion by resolution in favor or opposed to anything.
I'm, I'm very concerned about this Senate Bill 170, which everybody has a printout on, because that could, it would take away the city's right to restrict development by materials or size, and, and a couple of other things. And I understand the proponents are trying to make sure that housing stays affordable, but I think this could also have the opposite effects. My understanding is that this would, like when we enact a PZD, like for Country Club Villas, if this law passes and goes into effect, the city would not have been able to restrict the size, materials, or anything that went into Country Club Villas. So I don't think, I think the state should keep their noses out of this. I think it's definitely a local thing. The other thing that could happen is, okay, to promote affordable housing, say we could zone an area with a maximum square footage to make sure that all the houses built there were smaller houses that were affordable. If this were passed, we could not do that. So I'm really concerned that the state is trying to take this right away from the city.
So if you'd like to put a resolution in front of council, that's perfectly fine.
I certainly would support that too. I've read the Senate.
I went to the meeting down in Little Rock last week, and the biggest concern was these little bitty houses that you're seeing on TV.
Tiny homes?
Yes, it was their biggest concern, because it is in front of the, you know, municipal league, and Hayes has his opinion. If you want to know which way the municipal league is leaning, you need to call Little Rock and talk to Mark or one of his people. But, yeah, the municipal league has what their two cents worth in on this. But the big concern, at least at the meeting I attended, was they're worried about these little bitty places going in.
Baby.
I mean, municipal league itself and the guy who's, you know, the opponents to this that, you know, don't want it to happen.
But this wouldn't permit that.
No. No, but that's, that's part of the reasoning behind it. You have to, you have to talk to Hayes, because he's, he's the one who's pushing or not pushing as far as the municipal league goes. And one of the concerns is, if you go here, then pretty soon everything will be allowed kind of deal. It's been brought up by a construction firm or a number of construction firms.
And, and along with the PZD, like Country Club Villas, would, the city would not have been able to approve that. Everybody knows that I put in a proposal to buy the Arkmo land, and if I were going to annex that property into the city, I would not be able to do the kind of development I wanted to do, because it would be done as a PZD, which would restrict to healthy building materials and small houses. If this were passed, that development could not happen unless I built all of those houses. So that's my concern. Thank you.
If you will email me kind of your reasons that you want to say to be against it, then I can put it in a resolution format and add it to the agenda.
Thank you.
Lisa, go.
And there's another meeting I'm going to in March, I'll, I'll be addressing, and another one in April.
Just for clarification, there's a list of representatives at the end of this.
Right.
Letter. I, I don't see Bella Vista mentioned in there. Who are, they refer to this as a list of representatives on the city council.
No, city council and local affairs committee.
That's the name of the.
One.
Got it, okay, got it.
You know what the report that was handed out at the AML conference?
Right.
Who sits on what committees?
Yes. Okay, so these representatives and our representatives, if we wanted to contact somebody to, to lobby for this to pass or fail, those are the people to be contacted.
Yes.